partnership program. An innovative approach to policing.
If it wasn't for that, I would be another statistic. Getting pregnant at 16, dead, I don't know.
It is the philosophy that Chief Beck wants for the entire department and that is relationship-based, cultural-based policing.
LAPD Commander Philip Tingarides and his wife Amada, a police sergeant, are a biracial LAPD couple. Together, they've led a multiracial, all-inclusive brand of community policing, one that's built trust between cops and the low-income housing communities they serve. As this 2014 HBO documentary shows, officers supervise youth football and Girl Scout programs, forging bonds not only with the kids but also their families. The formula has helped reduce crime in L.A. Sergeant Tingarides says the old way of policing, arresting your way out of the problem, wasn't working.
When you can say I'm sorry for your organization and then the community accept that and forgive, you can then begin to move forward and make change, and we've done that in Watts.
The way they took me under their wing was under genuine mentorship. They cared for me and they showed me love.
Stephanie Amaya is now enrolled in college, pursuing a career in nursing. At the Anti-Defamation League ceremony, Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Other honorees included first responders and investigators in the San Bernardino terrorist attack. While a new program is helping Angelenos and LAPD officers learn some new lessons, Rasha Goel has more on how cops are hitting the streets to help local elementary students.
It's door-to-door service for these young students at 93rd Street Elementary School. Thanks to a new program called Walk a Cop to School, students and parents have the opportunity to walk directly from their home to school with LAPD cops.
Them having the trust of when we go to someone's house and take their kid to school and walk them to school, it's like something that they'd never seen before, and they're very excited about that.
I wish it could be every day, you know? The kids feel very, I'll say, safe and happy having the cops or the policemen walking them up to the school.
For now, it's a one-day thing where several students are selected from the school to participate in this program.
Working with partnership with the schools is very important. They identify the children who walk to school, they let us know who those kids are. We then reach out to the parents and make sure the parents are okay with us doing that.
The program is twofold. It helps strengthen the relationship between the community and the LAPD, and it also helps educate and inform parents and children about traffic safety.
Always look left and right, even though, even though you can cross the street, but make sure that, because when people are turning, make sure that you look left and right.
Is that something you knew already, or did you learn that today?
Learned it today.
What we've learned is when we walk the children to school, the most, I guess, the most concerning or now enlightening piece of it to us is a lot of the parents weren't familiar with the traffic safety laws.
For many of them, the program provides the comfort of feeling safe. And even for those getting dropped off to school, valet service was available.
So many crime around here that it's just crazy. Cars don't stop, kids almost get ran over. I mean, this is like a really good program right now that they're having, because normally we never had that much law enforcement around here.
LAPD officials say several schools have already reached out to them regarding their program, and they look forward to bringing Walk a Cop to School to other local schools in the area. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
Walk a Cop to School is a new program and has been implemented in two schools so far. While a section of the LGBT community has been largely silent in city policy until now, Gil Reyes reports on a newly-created advisory panel aimed at giving transgenders a bigger voice.
For the trans chorus of Los Angeles, it's enough to get up and sing. L.A.'s only all-transgender choir and others in this unique community are about to reach a high note in city government.
And to hear our voices from our community and for the voices of the ones who are voiceless.
The city of L.A. tries to even the playing field by creating a transgender advisory council, the biggest city in America to do this. Transgenders are people whose gender identities do not match their assigned sex at birth. Some people say they're the most ostracized group in the LGBT community, and it's finally time to right some wrongs.
There has not been transgender equality when it comes to economic opportunity, when it comes to the ability to just even rent an apartment, when it comes to jobs.
Second, though, is to look at ways that either directly through the executive branch or through the legislative branch, we can make changes that help us be the most trans-friendly city in the world.
L.A.'s sister city to the west, West Hollywood, was actually the first municipal government to set up an advisory council specifically for the transgender community. L.A.'s advisory council is expected to make policy recommendations regarding housing, also hate crime prevention. Improvements in job training, immigration, and health services are also expected with direction from the new nine-member panel. Recently, the city has taken steps to improve equality and safety for trans community members, like separate quarters for transgenders at LAPD lockups. That's because transgenders are oftentimes targeted for physical and sexual abuse behind bars.
I look forward to all of the reports that are going to be coming to my committee that I chair, and we will elevate the profile of this advisory council.
The government of Los Angeles and the city of Los Angeles, you're part of our family. We welcome you, we embrace you, and we love you.
In downtown L.A., Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Mayor Garcetti says the trans community has been asking for such a council since he took office. Well, The Los Angeles Times organized a discussion with L.A. Mayor Garcetti about transportation projects down the line and how Metro plans to fund them. Gil Reyes reports from L.A.'s Central Library.
This Q&amp;A moderated by L.A. Times writer Pat Morrison allowed the audience to tell the mayor what they think of L.A. Metro. One man said it's hard finding parking at the North Hollywood Red Line Station.
We were there at 6:30 in the morning. You have to park miles away. This is insane, and it discourages people from taking the red line.
That's part of the reason why Mayor Eric Garcetti is pushing for a half-cent sales tax increase on the November ballot. If approved, it's expected to fund $120 billion in transportation improvements. That may include additional parking spaces at Metro train stops.
It's not just about building lines, and all the money doesn't go into lines, new ones. It goes into existing ones, it goes into roads, it goes into sustainability, it goes into other options of transit, it goes into accessibility too for a lot of people who, if you have accessibility issues, this is still a pretty miserable place to get around as well, and we want to strengthen that. So absolutely, I want you to find that parking place, because I don't want you to give up and say, well, screw it, I'm gonna just drive in.
In response to the high demand for parking, Metro will begin charging for parking spaces at nine of its stops, including North Hollywood's Red Line Station. The cost, between $2 to $3 daily. This fee begins in May. It's part of a pilot program to test the feasibility of paid parking at all of Metro's 50-plus parking lots. Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Paid parking will also be available at the new Expo line to Santa Monica when it opens on May 20th. While a new non-stop service is cutting travel time to and from Scandinavia, and travelers couldn't be happier. Scandinavian resident Magz Jonsen has reason to smile as a frequent visitor to Los Angeles for both business and pleasure. He says this new route will cut his travel time by almost eight hours, and that means more visits to L.A.
That's great, you know? That's, if you shorten down the flight, I'd probably go more times a year, probably.
Expanded travel and trade to and from Los Angeles, that's what city and airline officials are hoping for as they gathered recently to mark Scandinavian Airlines' inaugural flight from Los Angeles to Stockholm, Sweden.
We have synergies with innovation, with tech, with entertainment. So tied to L.A.'s diverse markets and infrastructure, we're very confident that this is going to be a very successful destination for the Scandinavians.
Officials say nearly 400,000 Americans of Swedish descent live in California, and business ties are thriving. Sweden is the 11th-largest investor in the U.S., and here in California, Swedish companies have created 40,000 jobs.
Today's ribbon-cutting event and the inauguration of the SAS Los Angeles Stockholm Flight Showcase that these strong ties are there and there to stay.
SAS Airlines operated a direct route to Copenhagen more than two decades ago, providing the only direct link between Europe and California at that time. The service was grounded in 1994, but now, a new era has taken flight, and officials hope it will open a new window into everything Scandinavian countries have to offer.
We are indeed known for our nature, our culture, I think also for innovation, and most recently, it's also been highly ranked by many magazines as a very nice place to live and actually be. So I hope that all of you will enjoy it once you get a chance.
But in the meantime, it's the Scandinavian travelers who are benefiting the most, as they can now connect directly through L.A.
It's perfect, perfect, much shorter flight. We are so happy.
An energetic thumbs up for not only travelers, but the crew as well. The total flight time from L.A. to Stockholm is around 11 hours. While one engineer boldly goes where few women have gone before, a career in space exploration. As Gil Reyes reports, she and L.A.'s First Lady are encouraging other females to do the same.
Okay, let's see how we do.
The demonstration rover passes the durability test with ease, rolling through an uneven surface without toppling over. But the journey wasn't as smooth for jet propulsion laboratory flight engineer Mallory Lefland. She remembers her teenage years.
But at the time, I was really confused about what I wanted to do. All I knew was that I really liked math and science. I thought, okay, maybe I'll be a math teacher, or maybe I'll be a chemist, and then I would argue with my parents a lot, so I thought, oh, maybe I'd be a really good lawyer.
But Lefland pursued her passion, studied really hard in courses made up mostly of boys, and landed a job at NASA's JPL. Her proudest achievement so far, working on the Mars Rover Curiosity Project. On this Women's Heritage Month, Lefland and First Lady of Los Angeles, Amy Wakeland, encouraged female students to pursue careers in science and technology.
We need you. Women are only 13% of engineers and just 25% of people working in computer science and math. And in this city, we can't let that stand. So do what you love, focus on what you love, don't be deterred, and reach for your dreams and live important lives.
And the reaction?
If you work hard enough, you'll get it, so I'm thinking of going into NASA now.
Oh, give me a chance to stand out out of all the guys and show them I could actually do this.
The L.A. City Library offers hands-on science programs for young people.
And again, this is your library, and all of you are always welcome here, and our services are free.
To help L.A.'s female students reach for the stars. At the L.A. Central Library in downtown, Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
The L.A. City Library offers more than 500 free STEM programs for young people. STEM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. Well, it's a party with a purpose. Now in its fifth year in L.A., this ball is becoming one of the city's signature fundraising galas and premier social events while helping turn dreams into reality. Rasha Goel has more.
Masks and mystery. The United Negro College Fund's inaugural Mayor's Masked Ball was recently held at the JW Marriott in downtown L.A., a fundraising event to help young African-American and minority students achieve their dreams.
The United Negro College Fund funded my entire college experience for four years. And I can't tell you how it felt to have an extended family of donors that I didn't know that thought highly enough of me.
The United Negro College Fund awards 12,000 scholarships a year. About 120,000 students apply, and those with the best academic record and greatest need are the ones rewarded.
UNCF gives them that bridge between college and their dreams. Many times, that bridge doesn't exist, because people say, well, maybe I don't have enough money, my parents can't pay, I'm too working class, and they settle for just working after high school. But UNCF, this is about raising money to provide more of those bridges to be built throughout the city to great campuses around the country.
UNCF is the nation's largest minority education organization and provides operating funds for 37-member, historically black colleges and universities.
So this year, in our fiscal year, which will end March 31st, we're projected to have raised $135 million all across this country to support our work, to provide scholarships for deserving students who attend the college of their choice and to support historically black colleges.
Mysterious fund for a great cause. I, Rasha Goel, for L.A. This Week.
In its 70-year history, UNCF has raised more than $4.5 billion to help 400,000 students attend and graduate from college. While city leaders take steps to make it safer for passengers using ride-hailing and other transportation services, it may soon be up to you to decide to put the downtown L.A. streetcar back on track, and the Boyle Heights community gets together to promote safe streets in their neighborhood. All these stories in City Beat. Los Angeles Mayor Eric Garcetti and Councilmembers Paul Krikorian and Herb Wesson have asked the California Public Utilities Commission to allow the city of Los Angeles to implement a pilot program that would require fingerprinting for drivers of limos, vans, shuttles, and ride-hailing services, including Uber and Lyft, similar to what is now required for taxi drivers, who for decades have worked under a franchise agreement with the city, requiring live-scan fingerprints to cross-check potential drivers with the State Department of Justice database and others. Officials say this provides an essential safeguard for riders by preventing people with significant or violent criminal histories from driving passengers in the city of Los Angeles. Metro has earmarked $200 million to complete funding of the historic downtown L.A. streetcar. The project could be funded through a new half-cent sales tax on the November ballot. The potential measure would ask voters to increase the countywide sales tax by a half a cent for 40 years and to continue an existing tax, Measure R, for an extra 18 years to run through 2057. Officials say the measure would fund hundreds of transportation projects and focus on easing congestion and improving transportation options for the entire region. In response to recent hit-and-runs, Eastside community residents, along with transportation and youth organizations, recently came out for a street event in Boyle Heights to raise awareness for the need of safety and public space improvements along Caesar Chavez Avenue. The event is the culmination of months of community workshops and seeks to gather input from community members on ways the city can make permanent improvements to create a safer, more culturally vibrant street. Some residents say the efforts so far have made a difference.
Infrastructure that's being put in is really important as me, as a person who bikes and walks here. It's making the streets safer for us. You know, I don't feel as, I don't feel as in danger when I'm walking down the street that much anymore.
Renting a Zipcar just got easier with more places to drop off once you've checked out. Gil Reyes explains.
Yes, Yana, those innovations you mentioned are exclusive to Los Angeles, by the way, and come as Zipcar, the ridesharing service, has cars available at 10 Metro stops to hopefully strike a balance between driving and public transportation.
Hold the card over the card reader and wait to hear that beep. Don't swipe it, hold it, wait for it, that's the one.
Zipcar, a ridesharing service that requires Zip cards to access vehicles, unveils new features solely for the L.A. market. These rental cars that offer parking spaces too are available anytime through the Zipcar mobile app.
It really is about utilizing as many options as possible for people to get around.
Perhaps the biggest innovation is the ability to rent for one-way trips. That means you can check out Zipcars at one location and drop them off at another. More than 175 locations to choose from in the L.A. area. Company spokespersons say ridesharing using one Zipcar takes 15 personally-owned cars off the road.
Right now, the average Angelino spends 70 hours a year stuck in traffic. We have to make better choices. That 70 hours a year could go back to our families, to our education, to our jobs, and just to our quality of life.
L.A. Metro has started offering Zipcars at 10 of its stations, including the North Hollywood and Universal City Red Line stops. The goal is to improve transit options during the first and last miles of a rider's commute. These trips between home and the train station oftentimes require a car, because they're too far to walk. Metro was also negotiating with another rideshare company, Lyft, to determine the highest activity of rideshare trips near transit stops, to possibly build infrastructure there to meet the demand.
Anytime we're armed with more information and we can provide better opportunities for the residents of L.A., the better.
Because there's more than one way to get around town. In downtown L.A., Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
500 Zipcars are now available for rent in the L.A. area. While reliving some classic movies during the fifth annual Wayne Fetterman Film Fest, if horror is your thing, The Shining is just the ticket, and The Waddles Mansion goes Hollywood. All this and this week's things to do.
Take lunch at a charming pub. We want the finest wines available to humanity. We want them here, and we want them now.
Wayne Fetterman, the actor and writer known for bit parts in movies from Legally Blonde to Forty Year Old Virgin and a recurring role on Curb Your Enthusiasm, presents his fifth annual International Wayne Fetterman Film Fest, which brings big names and stand-up to Cinefamily to pick and introduce movies that have personally influenced them. This year's presenters include Keegan-Michael Key presenting With Nail and I, The Burbs, hosted by John Mulaney, Arthur, presented by Rob Cordrey, and many more.
Don't threaten me with a dead fish.
The fest begins March 31st and runs through April 3rd. The Cinefamily Theater is located at 611 North Fairfax Avenue. For more, visit cinefamily.org. The Great Movie Horror Night series is in full swing at the old abandoned zoo at Griffith Park. If scary movies are your thing, check out The Shining Under the Stars on April 1st. Gates open at 6:00 and the movie begins at 7:15. The Griffith Park Old Zoo is located at 4730 Crystal Springs Drive. For details, visit greathorrorcampout.com. For the first time, the city of Los Angeles will allow a designer showcase to be presented in one of the historic homes owned by the city, The Waddles Mansion, a 1908 Mission Revival. This historic estate, which includes 47 acres of prime property in the heart of Hollywood, will be brought back to life as top local Los Angeles-based designers create 18 memorable rooms inspired by Hollywood icons of the past 100 years. Until April 17th, the city of Los Angeles has opened the doors of this historic home to the public for a first-of-its-kind event in which acclaimed interior designers will use past movies or Hollywood stars, including Midnight in Paris, the artist Audrey Hepburn, and Clark Gable, as inspiration for the rooms they will design. Visit waddlesshowcase.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall. Don't worry, Patty, this isn't gonna hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide. Open wide.
Good morning. If everyone would please take their seats. It's Tuesday, March 29th. I want to welcome everyone to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, 10:00 AM. Public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield Bonham, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson. Eleven members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Fuentes moves. Englander seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Rue moves. Harris Dawson seconds, next.
And, Mr. President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
Let's rise for our flag salute. Will be led by Mr. Harris Dawson today.
Thank you so much, everybody in the chamber. Place your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson. Madam Clerk, let's go through the agenda.
Mr. President, there are requests to continue items 1F and 1X for two weeks to April 12th, 1BKNW for 30 days to April 22nd, and there's a request to receive and file 1C as the lien has been paid in full.
Okay, so without objection, that'd be the order. Continue.
Items 1 and 2 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do we have cards?
Yes, there are cards on both items.
Let's move.
Items 3 through 27 are items for which public hearings have been held. There's a request to hold item 18 on the desk.
Let's do that. Special, Mr. Bloomingfield.
For Mr. Buscaino, item 12, we could hold special.
Okay, we'll hold item 12. Specials, members, any other specials? I don't see any. Let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where, Madam Clerk?
That takes counsel to items 28 through 42, which are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Mr. Fuentes.
Mr. President, forthwith on number 5, please.
Okay, forthwith on number 5. Specials, members?
There is a, excuse me, Mr. President, there is a request to hold 36 on the desk.
Let's do that as well. What about cards?
Yes, there are cards on 28, 30, 31, 35, 38, and 41.
Okay, let's hold those items and prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Items called special are general public comment.
Okay, let's go to item 28. Mr. Walsh. Item 28, John Walsh. Mr. Walsh, come forward on item 28. Item 28.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at HollywoodDams. Now, we come to item 28 on the agenda. And item 28 concerns REAP, Rent Escrow Account Program. Remember, if your landlord is violating the rule, your contract, and there are code violations in your place of residence, if he doesn't repair them after a certain amount of time, the city takes over, and you don't pay your rent to the landlord anymore. You pay it to the city. You see how fast they pay up once the city goes after them. Again, when you do a very good job, I am the first to congratulate you. And your renters' rights things have been very good. Bye.
Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Hey, Mr. Walsh, come on back if you will. I've got you on item 31. In fact, just hang around for a minute. I'm going to try to take your items back to back. So now we're on item 31, called special by Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.com, dot org. This goes at wildlife protection fencing, fencing. This is item 31. South of Lake Hollywood Park in Council District 4. I think it's an excellent idea. I'm not sure the Hollywood unification team are the people to do it because they're very politicized. I remember when Sharon Romano began that. But we do need, and this is an old redevelopment project. Remember, we said we destroyed the redevelopment. It doesn't exist anymore. But I think what we really need is fencing on Hollywood Boulevard to prevent us from being bitten and raped and killed by the human wildlife that is on Hollywood High, on Hollywood Boulevard.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, don't go far. I'm going to call you again. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Mr. Walsh, item 38. Mr. Walsh, item 38.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org. Incidentally, how do you get, we have, the sidewalks in LA are in the worst condition they've ever been. If you go back to the 60s and the 70s, right, that's far back, you could eat off the sidewalk. Here, you can't even get your sidewalk cleaned if you're black or Hispanic. And, but these people here are so into it, they're getting a brand, brand-new sidewalk, and it's going to cost a mere $100,000. You know how much that could spent, could be spent for blacks and Hispanics in their neighborhoods? But remember, if you're white, that's all right. If you're black, stand back. And if you're brown, you can stick around. HollywoodHighlands.org, racist city council.
Let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. Walsh, item 2.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.com. Again, another liquor license. A nun was run over by a drunk driver. We have the worst, most liquor licenses per square mile of any city in America, and we have the most drunk driving. Scumbags like Mr. Rue ran on that. And you watch, he'll vote for the liquor license. All of the--
Stay on the subject.
This, I'm talking about the liquor license and how you're going to vote. You just want to stop me because you want this poison to get into the system, and you sell out the blood of your own people, Herb Wesson, when you vote in favor of this. We have enough goddamn liquor licenses in this city. And why are you building, putting in another liquor license? For the public's convenience and for necessity. Who, who here says that alcohol is a necessity? Maybe for gay bars, Mr. Bonham, but not--
You're off the subject. Thank you. Let's prepare to vote on that subject. I mean, this item, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Ms. Peirman, Donna Peirman, item 41. Donna, come on, item 41.
Okay, here we go on a financing, rehabilitating, improving, a 430-unit multifamily rental housing. This is another one of these things where they're overspending on these affordable housings and putting these, not getting the people that are American citizens, are blacks, into them. No, they're usually putting in our, going to be, putting our Syrians and, or searing refugees into those places, or illegal aliens in those places, which we still haven't done anything about. So, in the meantime, people, we are going to be paying for these things. It's going to be coming through our property taxes, overdoing our property taxes or some form of taxes, so that we're spending money for these people to have this great big affordable housing, people that we're not going to be going into these places. And we have, by the way, only a small part will be affordable housing, and most of it will be for rich people. That's it.
Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, come back, Donna. We're going to do item 30. Donna Peirman, item 30.
Oh, yeah. This is the one saying that we wanted to assist only the LGBT center in the stretch and development of affordable housing. I don't see why we're centering off and doing only things for the lesbian, gay, bi, transsexual. This seems to be conflict of interest to only going for a certain amount of people and extending the bulk of the people. We should have things that benefit the bulk of the people instead, yeah, and especially the people that believe in marriage between a man and a woman. So, this doesn't seem right, and we're spending $50,000 for a Hollywood redevelopment agent's spot, and we need to keep money for the bulk of the people and not spend it all on affordable housing. And that's, I'm going to leave it for a minute. Thank you.
Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, we'll be getting to our presentations in a few moments. I just want to go through some of this business. We're going to move to item 35. Mr. Walsh, item 35, followed by Mr. Previn and Ms. Peirman. Item 35. Mr. Walsh, you have one minute remaining.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or at J. Walsh tweeting at J. Walsh Confidential. This again concerns a company that is out of the pure, pure unselfishness, is giving the city $133,000. You want unselfishness, read the Bible. Find out what happened to the man who said, the man the Bible is written about. I'm telling you right now, when they, somebody gives the city $135,000 for community benefits, a lot of that money is going to trickle down to people who are hooked in. Nobody gives 130, no corporation, Sun Valley Paperstock, gives the city $135,000 and doesn't expect something big, more than $135,000, in return.
Okay, Mr. Previn?
Thank you, sir. It is Eric Previn from CD2. And since this is a motion that was made by Councilmember Nury Martinez and seconded by Paul Krikorian, I wanted to bring forward, because we are Valley folks, you know, our appreciation and curiosity, of course, about this enormous donation from, sorry, from, from Sun Valley Paper, Inc. Now, Sun Valley Paper, Inc. is a trusted partner. In April of 2013, the community benefit they provided was only $23,000. Subsequent to that, in November of 2013, Councilmember Martinez received some $700 donations from some of the folks on staff over there. So you could check that at the Ethics Center. Nothing wrong with that. It's all perfectly legal. But then, now, we have seen a fairly robust uptick in the community benefit that I think, if I got it correct, goes into her district's special fund for special, taking care of projects that she is focused on. So, I don't know. That's $110,000 increase in donation. So I think if we could just get a round of applause, Mr. Sadio and the others, because this is really an enormous commitment from a trusted partner. Sir, sir, you're not applauding. I don't get it. This is a great, this is a great moment. Not a great moment. Okay, fine. Anyway, I appreciate your interest in city government, and I would, I would ask that you, sir, is there something wrong, Professor Krikorian? It seems reasonable to me to bring up--
Stay on the subject.
It is a trusted partner. They make paper bags, sir. As you recall, we got rid of the plastic bags, I think. So this is a good sign, because we're moving forward in an environmentally sound way, and I think we could certainly get a little bit of love on that. Nothing. Okay, do my homework. They don't make paper bags. Okay, it's possible they don't make paper bags. We'll take a correction when we see one. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Peirman?
This is crazy for community benefits-- This is crazy for community benefits for CD Six, twenty-three thousand, over five hundred, and now over a hundred and ten thousand. And, well, Nuri, with a hundred and thirty-three thousand, you now have the money to open up bad-eyes video conferencing. Yay! Our community wants to speak to Los Angeles City Council, and that's the area that we want the most.
Stay on the subject.
It is. You spent a hundred and thirty-three thousand, that's where we want to spend it. There's a lot of things to be done in CD Six, but ability to be able to speak to city council is just as important. So, I don't see, and I'm, if you don't do something like that, then I'm totally against this paper stock. I don't know why they're giving a hundred and thirty-three thousand or what they plan to get from it. But I know where I want the money spent, and this would be good for the community, not just for all of the San Fernando Valley. And I'll keep it down to a minute. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanna clear the record that part of the money, well, all of the money is going toward, towards a mitigation fund set up by the community for benefit, for benefits of the community regarding the Sun Valley Paper Stock Company. It is not a, a bag company. It's actually a recycling company, and so the mitigation funds going toward addressing environmental issues in Sun Valley, both in my district and Councilmember Krikorian's district. Thank you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on the item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's quickly go to item eighteen. On that item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Mr. Price, are you ready with your presentation? Yes, Mr. Price. The floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Members, today I want to acknowledge a dynamic duo in Los Angeles, two individuals who have contributed so many ways to our fair city. Ms. Gwendolyn Cross has been a tireless advocate for women's rights and is, and is the founder and CEO of California Women for Women, a consulting group who not only helps women get elected, but also advocates for, for equal rights. Basil Kimbrough, also known as Chef Basil, has been a keen political antenna and always knows what's going on, the word on the street. He is active, also actively involved in the community and is always asking, what more can he do? Today, I brought them here together to acknowledge them for their ongoing service to veterans and the homeless. Basil, a veteran himself, saw that there was a lack of services for homeless vets who not only, who had not received permanent housing, a gap we hope to remedy by the end of this year. Basil and Gwen parted on this venture to ensure that our veterans were cared for with the dignity that they deserved. So, doing what he does best, Basil set out to feed thousands of homeless veterans from all over the county. With Gwendolyn's tenacity and fundraising skills, they've been able to mobilize others in a two-person call to action. I wanna thank them for their service, and it's not personal, but that's my sincere hope that you will soon be out of business in Los Angeles and on to other worthy endeavors. But in the meantime, we appreciate your, your service. We appreciate your commitment. We appreciate your willingness to give to others. And on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council and the citizens here, we're pleased to acknowledge you both for your advocacy and for your hard work. Congratulations. Keep up the good, good efforts.
Let's give him a round of applause. Thank you. Thank you both for, for all that you do. We owe our veterans, Mr. Price, a debt we could never repay.
Mr. President, objection to them just saying a few words?
Oh, I was, I was just gonna ask you to do that, but I did wanna say, before you spoke, that we appreciate everything that, that, that you've done and where it relates to all of the assistance that you're giving to our veterans. We can't say enough about that. We cannot do enough for them. They put their lives on the line so that we can go to work and raise our families. And so, if I had a hat on, I would tip it. I don't, so I'll just salute you both and thank you for your service to the city of Los Angeles. The floor is yours.
First, I'd like to say, excuse me, first, I'd like to say thank you for this honor and recognition. I'm humbled, I'm grateful, and we're just doing what it's in our heart to do for the veterans and the homeless, and we're gonna continue to do our work. It's something that we just get up every day thinking about what we can do to try to make their lives better. And we need everyone's help, everyone's support, and if each person in this room decided to do something to help, we could get it done. And I thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to say just thank you as well, but she's really modest. I want everybody in this chamber to just listen to me for a second. Because of this young lady behind me, she's the one, and I get teary-eyed, that when I lost everything, she brought me back to life, as we say, we never leave a man or a woman behind. And because of her, it's the reason why I went to Lakota Bu Culinary School, and it's because of her that last year she fed a hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-three homeless veterans and veterans. And I'm just humbled to be here because of her. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Krikorian, are you prepared to move forward with your presentation? Then the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, if there were any equivalent of Valley Forge or the Alamo for the Armenian people, it would be the Battle of Musadakh. We're celebrating the centennial right now of the heroic resistance of the people of Musadakh, which began shortly after the beginning of the Armenian genocide. And this is a little-known chapter in history that really has affected far more people than you might expect. When many of the villages and areas of the historic Armenian homelands were ordered to evacuate by the Turkish authorities and were marched into the desert to their death, the people of Musadakh reacted differently. When they were given their evacuation orders, they said, no. They went into the hills, and they armed themselves, and they organized a resistance to that oppression and that genocide. And the result was that after two, two months of being surrounded, outgunned, far outnumbered by massive Turkish forces, the tiny group of people in that, in that armed resistance were able to hold off a much larger force until Allied ships came to their rescue and took four thousand people away and saved their lives in the face of what would have been inevitable death otherwise. Now, that would have been an amazing enough story. But a few years later, an Austrian novelist named Franz Werfel wrote a book called Forty Days of Musadakh, and that book became an international bestseller in the nineteen thirties. And it was so important as a story of heroism and resistance that it was widely circulated in the Warsaw ghetto during, in the years leading up to World War II and the years leading up to the Holocaust. And Jewish and Polish resistance to Nazi occupation in Warsaw was inspired by reading Forty Days of Musadakh, which they handed from house to house so that people could, could hear this story and draw inspiration from it. In fact, the story was so inspirational that it encouraged the Warsaw uprising, and then it also inspired Louis B. Mayer in the nineteen thirties to option the book to make a movie in the United States. Now, that movie was on its way to production. They had cast Clark Gable to play the leading role, and that's when the Turkish government got involved. And the Turkish government, through its ambassador to the United States, started putting political pressure on MGM to kill that movie, and they succeeded. And so, Forty Days of Musadakh remains unmade, at least by MGM. So, this is a story, really, that is very, very important to the Armenian people, but it really is a story that is a source of inspiration to all peoples around the world who have been, who have faced oppression, who have faced insurmountable odds, but through courage and through organization and through passion and through commitment have been able to survive and resist. I think that it teaches us all a lesson of the power that a few people can have in the face of the mighty and the powerful. It also is a story of the lessons of denial, and when we fail to learn the lessons of the past and when we allow denialists to have influence, the power that they can have as well. And then sadly, it's a message that resonates still today, because Musadakh is an area on the border of Syria and Turkey. And despite its name means Mountain of Moses, it's not a place that has led to liberty and freedom to those people in that area today, because as we all know, the people of Syria continue to suffer, continue to suffer genocide and atrocity. And unfortunately, the lessons that we failed to learn continue to have ramifications today. So, I'm very pleased to be able to, to commemorate this centennial, but also, I'm very pleased to commemorate it with the descendants of the heroes of Musadakh who are here today with us, the Musaler Organization, which keeps alive the traditions and the culture and, and the history of Musadakh, the Musadakhzis who are here with us today to celebrate. I'd like to thank them for being with us. I especially want to recognize our representatives of Archbishop Mushek Marderosian, Father Narik Pelevanian, and Deacon Khadchikyan, and representing Archbishop Hovnan Dardarian, Father Bakrad Berzekian, and Deacon Artak Khadchikian. And we also have representatives of, as I mentioned, of the Musadakh Organization, the Musaler, and I would like to ask Dr. Vahram Shimasyan to come and speak on, on their behalf.
Let's give him a round of applause. Thank you so much, Mr. Krikorian.
Good morning, everyone. On behalf of the Musadakh or Musaler Association of California, I would like to begin my very brief speech by thanking you, the Los Angeles City Council, and especially Councilmember Paul Krikorian, for the recognition that you have bestowed upon the heroic resistance of the Musadakh people to the Armenian genocide in nineteen fifteen. Personally, it is very gratifying for me to be part of this auspicious occasion, because my grandparents hailed from Musadakh. Musadakh, situated as it was in the northeastern Mediterranean basin within the Ottoman Empire, refused to comply with the deportation orders and, for more than forty days, fought the mighty Ottoman army. With a happy twist, the resistors, some four thousand souls, including women and children, were rescued by French battleships and taken to safety in Egypt. Among the few instances of resistance during the genocide, it was that of Musadakh which attracted most attention in the international press. But this uplifting story, once it immediately vanished, would probably have been relegated to oblivion had it not been for the pen of one man, Franz Werfel or Werfel. He published a novel titled Forty Days of Musadakh, which received international recognition upon its rendition from the original German to numerous languages, including English, Hebrew, and Armenian. The powerful symbolism and message that the novel conveyed universally had, and I believe still has, a direct bearing on the lives of two peoples especially, the Armenian and the Jewish. The Armenians hailed Werfel as a hero and non-Armenian who had embraced their cause by telling the world their forsaken story. As for the Jews, they drew parallels between the faiths of the Armenian and Jewish peoples. In Palestine, one of their plans of resistance during World War II carried the name of Musadakh. In Europe, faced with moral and existential dilemmas, leading proponents of the idea of converting the Jewish and Polish ghettos into citadels of resistance had Musadakh as their model, because it gave them hope for survival. What are some of the lessons that could and should be drawn from the Musadakh episode today? First, evil, no matter how destructive, can be defeated by human resolve. Second, heroism is not just an abstraction. It is real and should be set as an example for sustaining human dignity. Third, people create their own destiny through self-reliance. Fourth, might is not necessarily right and triumphant. Human rights, no matter how manipulated or abused, weigh heavier than and can defeat sheer material power. Fifth, truth shall prevail despite all attempts at denial. Sixth, double standards applied to recognition of genocide sow the seeds of future genocides and therefore should be abandoned categorically. Seventh, teaching history is a must, for it will make people more aware, not just about their past, but also about their future, about their present. This awareness, it is hoped, will make us more alert, realistic, and ready for any eventuality that portends catastrophe. Lastly, sharing people's hours, experiences, finding common grounds, and fighting together are surely recipes for success. I thank you again.
So, members, it gives me great pleasure, on behalf of all of the members of the City Council of Los Angeles, as well as the mayor, to present this resolution commemorating the centennial of the resistance of Musadakh to the representatives of the descendants of those heroes who are here with us today. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Krikorian. Congratulations. That was a wonderful history lesson. Thank you. Madam Clerk, can we move on to item one?
Yes, Madam President. And on item one, there are requests to continue for two weeks to April twelfth. That would be one E and one H. And there are requests to receive and file some items, and that is one B, D, and L. And those are being received and filed in as much as the liens have been paid in full.
Without objection, there will be the order. I'm gonna move on to speaker cards. And the first speaker on item one is Maria Mojica. Are you here? Maria Mojica, on item one H. I don't see anyone from, by that name. The next speaker is Patricia McAllister on item number one.
Yes, I'm Patricia McAllister. Item number one, I do go online and look at these properties. If anyone is interested, just click on these numbers here. This is the property case number. Now, I'm concerned here, because the city is charging two-hundred-and-fifty percent. That's a, that's a penalty charge. That's abuse. I think that should be reduced to twenty percent. See, we're not here to take people's houses. We're here to try to save people's houses. Now, I saw on one property, the property owner owed five hundred dollars. And guess what the penalty was? Three hundred and thirty-three dollars on five hundred dollars. Come on, guys, what are you trying to do? Okay, this is insane. Now, I noticed that the property is even listed here, there's only one property in District One. District One is Sidelio, I think I'm pronouncing his name right. That's where the illegal aliens are. Why aren't they, that's the poorest district in the city, and why aren't they having their houses being taken away from them? Okay, I don't understand this. This is kinda funny. I think that his district is getting this-- I think that his district is getting this Handy Worker Program money, this $2.8 million. That's why we don't see any liens on, every week, we come in here with this list. I never see liens in District One, maybe one or two. Same thing with District Four. That has the highest Asian illegal population. So the Asians have somewhat surpassed the Mexicans. We have more Asian illegal aliens in the city than ever before. So I need to know why they don't have properties. The properties that have liens are in the black community, with the three black council members. Okay, Price, Harris Dawson, and up there. Okay, our president, Herb Wesson, council districts eight, nine, and 10. So this is racism. This is nothing but racism and white supremacy.
Next speaker is Donna Pierman on item one. Donna?
I think we need to turn this racist because I believe there's a lot of white people having liens over here. But she is right on the fact that most of these people can't pay their liens because you put penalty after penalty on these things. And then you keep on counseling them over and over and over and over. So, I mean, eventually, they're going to have to be paying for these things, but you give them a false hope that somehow will run away. Thank goodness for the ones that somehow were able to pay. But we still have over, we still had 20 over $1,000. We had nine over $3,000. So, you know, this is, we're going to have to bring these down and help these people pay for it, maybe even, hey, we bailed out the banks, maybe we can bail these people out too, because I have a feeling these are really kind of silly things that are up here. Well, it's okay, I'm just going to my last item. So, you know, I was...
You've got to speak to the item, Donna.
Anyway, we need to help these people pay for these things. Oh, yeah, they're usually silly things, like their sidewalk is broken, this is obstructing their view, and you put out liens on these things. Most of these are silly liens, and yes, if you're going to put liens on the other people, then we should be putting liens on illegal aliens if you have to. But really, I believe that there should be a way that these liens go away on these useless items that nobody knew about it, anything about these, until all of a sudden, they got a lien, and all of a sudden, they're being penalized and have to pay money on something that's useless. Look at the City Council, they overspend.
Thank you, Donna. Thank you. That concludes cards on this item. Madam Clerk, Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Regarding one V, I wanted to remove all late fees and interest associated with this lien in the amount of $3,076.11, bringing the total amount of the lien back to $948.16.
That'll be the order. Madam Clerk, that concludes speaker on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Item passed. Let's move on to item 36.
Item 36, call special for cards.
First speaker is Eddie Graffio. Is Eddie here? Come on forward, sir. Followed by Ben Forat and Athena Novak. Good morning, sir. Go ahead.
Hi, good morning. I was invited by Athena to speak in behalf. I'm going to talk about the slope restoration of Lake Ridge that was recently done. The slope failure occurred sometime in 2005 at the descending slope east side of Lake Ridge Residential and Department of Water and Power property. Most of the slope failure were located on the LADWP property, according to geotechnical investigation. So existing slope gradient in the overall approximation, it's around two horizontal and one vertical. Steeper slope areas are commonly associated with slope failures, basically on three isolated portion of the approximate 740 feet long and 210 feet wide of the slope restoration improvement. The gradient difference between the top and bottom slope of the restoration is approximately about 120 feet. Now, the construction access done on that project, there are two temporary construction access created during the improvement. The first one was the existing access at the south side. It has been utilized as temporary access only for the permanent rehabilitation of the slope. And the second, that new temporary access were constructed at the north side entry through Department of Water and Power property. And later, that existing, later, the temporary access was closed after completion of the permanent slope rehab.
Thank you, sir. Sir, your time is up. Thank you. Next speaker is Ben Forat, followed by Athena Novak and Fred Gaines. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Ben Forat, the property owner. I wanted to thank all the honors for letting me speak. About 10 years ago, I was approached by former councilmen Tom Labanche and the DWP for access to the property that I own. The reason they needed access was because a lot of the houses on top of the hillside were falling down into the Lake Hollywood, and the access road was closed to Lake Hollywood. I unwilling, I opened my doors and let the city go up, and they were able to fix a lot of the mudslides and were able to open up the lake once again. As you may already know, severe rains and mudslide damaged the hillside surrounding Lake Hollywood. One of the homeowners in the neighborhood saw opportunity and asked for a million dollars for 20-foot access. The sad part of the story is that he did not even own the access. He had blocked the access road, which is a future street, by chain link fence. I opened my doors for free to the city of LA and the community. I have given continuous access to the city for the last 10 years to try to repair this hillside. The perimeter road of Lake Hollywood is now open after many years of being closed. For being a good citizen, I was given a certificate that was signed by the president of the City Council and the former councilman, Mr. Tom Labanche. The City Council moved the motion to allow an R3 zoning in a couple of the properties that I own down below. This was unanimously agreed by the full City Council on March 18 of last year. Since then, I've spent over $300,000 in engineering, traffic studies, environmental reports, geology reports, you name it. As a matter of fact, lots of the neighbors that I've spoken with around the neighborhood, they like my project. This makes sense a year ago, and not because additional expansion we're making to Coanga Boulevard, you can have less traffic on Coanga Boulevard.
Thank you, sir.
All I want is a chance to be able to complete the process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Athena Novak, followed by Fred Gaines.
Hello, good morning, council members. To give everybody an idea of the site that we're talking about today, it's actually 2864 Coanga. It is the area of 805,000 square feet, some of the largest urban infill in the city of Los Angeles. It sits in between the universal evolution and the expansion of the Ford Theater. When we were approached several, about a year and a half ago, in regards to this site to do a future development on it, we did the respectable thing and we met with the councilman. We looked at this massive site out there, and then soon, through vetting it through the process, found out that one of the roads that we thought were a hiking trail was actually not a hiking trail. It is a DWP access road. On Lake Ridge Drive, in between Lake Hollywood, DWP owns that land. There was a massive slope issue there. VCA Engineering just spoke about it. It's been shored up. They could not get heavy equipment back there, and actually, these homes were sliding down the hill into one of LA's reservoir. DWP has written a letter of support on public record, asking that this access road be retained by the city of Los Angeles. Over the years, we have actually allowed DWP, through the grace of the private landowner, access back there. The other thing through the process of working with the city for zone change is this is 805,000 square feet. We looked at the site and we put the development closest to Coanga. We later then found out that the Department of Engineering only had a three-foot dedication on Coanga. Now, we all know, because we've traveled that, that there's a 101 freeway, Coanga, and then the subject site. Well, 1,200 of linear feet is owned by the private sector. What my client did with working with DWP, when we finally came to a conclusion that it would never be able to achieve the dreams of a 60-foot widening, is he did volunteer 30 feet additional as a dedication that's not required to ensure that that vital artery was expanded.
Thank you. Thank you. Colleague, good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Fred Gaines, on behalf of the applicant. What we're asking today is for you to invoke your own Rule 16 and have this sent to the appropriate committee. In October 2014, this motion was initiated to do this planning arrangement where 10 acres would be donated for park and trail, 10 acres would be developed consistent with the zoning on the next door property. That went to two hearings at your General Services Committee, went to a hearing at your Plumb Committee, came back six months later in March, adopted unanimously. My client relied on that, has spent $300,000 on preparing an EIR. The traffic study's already gone through DOT, determined that they want certain things on Coanga Boulevard. We've worked with your other departments, with the Park and Recreation, with General Services, and we're now ready to start the EIR process. That's all, that's where we are, is just to start the EIR process. And here's a motion to stop everything. We're just going to pull the complete, we're going to pull the complete application. We said, allow the EIR to go forward so that we can get public input, we can put the work that's been done to use, it's going to be needed anyway. Even if you're going to reject this project and put another project, the EIR is going to study all the various alternatives. That's what, do that. We said, put the application on hold, let us have a working group, let us have a charrette, let us work with the neighborhood council. That was rejected. We said, put it to vote, up or down. No one is questioning that Councilman Rue is ultimately going to be very influential as to what ends up happening on this property. The question is, do we allow it to be studied? Do we allow this work to go forward? When this council, this great council takes an action, 12-0, and says we want to head in this direction, and people rely on that, $300,000 worth of studies, they expect they'll at least get those studies reviewed, they'll at least have the EIR issued for public comment. Not a year and a half later, forget it, we didn't mean to do that, call it off. We ask, Mr. President, that you send this to a committee to be reviewed.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, members.
Thank you. Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Mr. President. Unfortunately, this is one of those things wasn't done right from the first time. Our office has been working with the developer and their representation, and unfortunately, back in 2014, over the protest of both the community and the planning department, they did not support the project. And I do not currently support it the way it is. I am in its current form, and all I'm asking for them to do is to go back and do it correctly, to actually file an application. Because what happened in 2014 was, no application was filed, no fees were filed, everything was waived. So we're asking them to go back, file an application, do it right the first way, like everybody else does it, and follow the rules. And when they're following the rules, specifically get support from both the community, but more importantly, also the planning department. So, and I do understand that they are at the EIR, but this is an EIR that no one is going to support, and we want them to save money and do it right the first time. But there is now a threat of litigation, so, and actually, I've been talking with the city attorney's office, I'm going to kick it for a day. I'll have my staff contact your staff to give you a little bit more information, but I'll push it for one day and to, I believe, close session for tomorrow, so we can do a further explanation. No?
Mr. City Attorney?
Has there been a threat of litigation?
Yes.
From Mr.?
Today.
Okay, so we will have to...
We, we, we just...
So give us direction, Mr. City Attorney.
Yeah, we'll have the language. I gave the paper to my colleagues, I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll get you the language.
So we could, yeah.
Okay, I've been informed that Friday works better for us. Can we? That's what I'm told. Does that work for you, Mr. Rue?
That's fine, Mr. President.
So then we'll continue the item to Friday?
And that's April 1st.
Okay, now let's begin item 12. Go to item 12. In fact, Mr. Buscayino, you may want to set this up for the council, so I'm going to call on you, Mr. Buscayino, at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this item before you is long waiting. This is, as we know, in dealing with our sidewalks in the city of Los Angeles, our sidewalks are an embarrassment. And over the course of the last 40 years, we've had a policy in place that has failed the city, has failed its residents and its businesses. And over the past year, I was proud to partner with Mr. Krikorian, Chairman of Budget and Finance Committee, and our respective colleagues on the Public Works Committee and the Budget and Finance Committee. We held a total of nine joint committees, every part of the city, to address this very complex issue, the embarrassing condition of one of the most basic, important elements of our transportation infrastructure, that's our sidewalks. Our two policy committees collaborated on this and worked together. Councilman Krikorian and I felt that it's important for the two of us to put our heads together and propose a path forward so that we're not leaving this problem for generations to come. And we agreed to address as many of concerns expressed by our bids, our colleagues here, residents, businesses, neighborhoods as well, neighborhood councils specifically, environmental advocates, the disabled, and other stakeholders. And what's before you today attaches a comprehensive approach that provides options, recognizing in this diverse city that a one-size-fits-all strategy will not work. The letter that we submitted to each and every one of you, from Mr. Krikorian and I, along with councilmembers Martinez, Bonin, along with the joint committee, contains a framework that we believe is deserving of your support. It directs our CAO to look at accelerating fix and release programs so that we can take advantage of today's low interest borrowing rates and low construction costs to ensure we get the best bang for our buck. What it does, it also allows us to be smart about the opportunity and leverage a $1.4 billion investment to achieve multiple benefits, such as providing job opportunities to city residents and underserved communities, and providing environmental benefits like stormwater infiltration. I also want to point out a couple of other recommendations that I'm really proud of. Using neighborhood councils and homeowners associations to assist with an inventory of problem sidewalks needing repair, looking at a fix and release program for sidewalks, providing a 20-year warranty on fixes that are made by the city, and a five-year warranty for commercial and industrial properties. The 20-year guarantee would be for residential fixes as well. In addition, looking at using both private and public labor forces, working side by side to make the fixes. We also, one of the recommendations, look at best practices for the maintenance of the urban forest. Also, reporting with finance of delivery options for a sidewalk repair program that will overall accelerate the program, as I mentioned earlier. And for me, looking at the repeal of the tree root exception that got us in this mess over 40 years ago. So, want to thank again Mr. Krikorian for your partnership, and also a number of individuals that have allowed us to get to where we're at today. Mr. Santana, thank you so much for your leadership, along with David Horano and Stacy Sosa, City Attorney Mike Fuhr, Deputy Chief, Chief Deputy City Attorney Jim Clark, thank you so much for your guidance on this, Sharon So and her team, Matias Farfan and Paul Smith... you so much for your guidance on this, Sharon So and her team, Matias Farfan and Paul Smith, City Engineer Gary Lee Moore who's here, Scott Basiken and Carl Nelson with BOE. On the Board of Public Works, we have our Commission President Kevin James, Commissioner, thank you, along with Joel Hesinto, Nazario, Salcedo, and Ron Lorenzen of the Bureau of Street Services, Steve Simon and Angela Kaufman of the Department of Disability, and John Reamer from our Bureau of Contract Administration. This is for me, as Chairman of Public Works, we talk about the importance of public safety, of infrastructure and the economy. Infrastructure is so important to this city. And when I arrived here as a council member, Mr. President, thank you for allowing me to serve as Chairman of Public Works. It's important for me to focus on improving our infrastructure from sidewalks, our streets are failing as well, that's coming up. So, it's, today before us is, again, a comprehensive sidewalk repair program, a policy that's really going to focus on the importance of fixing our sidewalks throughout the city of Los Angeles. I ask for an I vote, and thank you, thank you for your support.
Okay, now before I call on Mr. Kukorian, Mitch, for an introduction, we have some very special young people with us today. Mr. Englander.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Kukorian. And I do plan on speaking on this item as well, but I'll do so in my turn. Kadima is here today, and I want to recognize them. You guys can give us a big round of applause for Kadima in the back. In the interest of full disclosure, Kadima is near and dear to my heart. My family, in fact, was one of the very first families to enroll in Kadima. And Kadima, for many, many years, was actually a Jewish school without a home. It started off at Temple Beth Codish, where I went and I attended with my family. My sister was, God rest her soul, was one of the first ever in Kadima to enroll. And then after we had lost Kadima, like the Jews have wandered around looking for a home for so many years, we finally got one, many years ago, that Sean Evenheim purchased and built a phenomenal school in our community that just does incredible work. And so now we have our leaders here of Kadima, our future leaders, and I want to recognize them for taking the time out of their busy lives, out of their education and schooling to come here and visit us, and we truly appreciate it, and thank you for being here today. Thank you so much.
Okay, let's give them a round of applause. Kids, raise your hands, you're on television. Big smiles. That's a good-looking group. With that said, Mr. Kukorian, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, this is a historic day. For 40 years, probably the most common complaint that every council member in every district of the city has heard is about the sorry state of our sidewalks. And for 40 years, council after council after council has let that problem fester and get worse. And today, this council is stepping up and going in a different direction. And I am so thrilled and proud of the work that we have all done collectively to get here. I want to thank Mr. Buscaino and his staff, and the Public Works Committee, as well as all the members of the Budget and Finance Committee, and my own staff who've worked so hard to get us to this day. This is a problem that has been 40 years in the making. As all of you here know, but many folks at home may not know, 40 years ago, this city made a very short-sighted decision of deciding to take on the responsibility of all sidewalk repair caused by tree roots, even though state law said that the city should not do that, that that should be the responsibility of the property owner. 40 years ago, the city made that decision because they had a moment of opportunity to see some federal money. That federal money disappeared within two years, and for the remaining four decades, we've been left with a responsibility that we've had no ability to fulfill. Well, today, we are changing that. This council has already committed, in the last three years of our budget, three years we've committed $50 million that have gone into the Sidewalk Repair Trust Fund and is being spent today. This council has also already committed itself to $30 million a year, $31 million a year and escalating with inflation over the next 30 years, to continue to fund sidewalk repair. So, we have made a commitment that no other council has made in nearly a half a century. And now, what's before you today is a comprehensive, well-thought-out, balanced policy for how that money will be spent in fixing 11,000 miles of sidewalks throughout this city. It's the way we ought to make policy. We've drawn input from every part of the city, every member of two committees has played a significant role in shaping and developing this policy. We've listened to stakeholders throughout the city, and we've developed a policy that will work, that will fix every sidewalk in the city of Los Angeles, and importantly, will make sure that no one will have to dig into their pocket to fix a sidewalk for many, many years to come, because that will be a cost that will be borne by the general fund. So, it's a very important day to take a positive vote and to change a direction, and I again want to thank Mr. Buscaino, who's been such a great partner, his whole staff, my whole staff, all of the members of the Budget and Finance Committee who've played such an important role in this, as well as Public Works. Respectfully ask for your I vote.
Mr. Englander.
Thank you very much. 13 years ago, when my predecessor, Greg Smith, became a city council member, council president asked him, what committee do you want to serve on? He said, I want to chair Public Works. It's Public Works. With all the problems, we're never going to fix the sidewalks and the streets, trim the trees, I mean, that's one of the biggest headaches. We don't have the money, things are falling behind. He said, you know, outside of public safety, it's probably one of the most important functions we do each and every day in every one of our communities. Fast forward through that, I remember the day Joe got elected, and we were talking, in fact, at his victory party, got the high five in the newspaper. And I said, what committee are you interested in? Just curious. He said, Public Works. Outside of public safety, it's the most important quality-of-life issue that affects every single person every day, our streets, our sidewalks, our infrastructure. What you've done in working together, and I said, you know, let's put a plan together, SOS LA, save our streets and sidewalks, and we spent a year writing a thousand-page blueprint and went to every corner of the city, and everybody talked about the fact that nobody walks in L.A. because they can't. The fact that we pay out $5 to $6 million a year in slip-and-falls alone, the fact that it costs double, double, to drive the streets of Los Angeles just for maintenance on your vehicle, tires, brakes, alignments, drums, and rotors, as any other major city in the country, that we've got to invest in infrastructure, create those jobs, and fix our communities. And what you've done in working together with Councilmember Kukorian and others, in coming up with this framework that works, whether we were mandated, was a settlement or otherwise, it happened because the political will was there. This is monumental, and I appreciate it. It's been certainly not just a passion of mine from a public policy perspective, but it sends the message that the city really is on track. Because when I first got elected, we were looking down the barrel of a billion-dollar budget deficit, and again, want to give a special shout-out to Councilmember Kukorian as a Chair of Budget and Finance, where not only are we stable and AA-rated today, one of the best and highest credit ratings of any big city, if not the best in the entire country, we're now making a huge investment in the infrastructure to fix every community. So I want to just stand and rise and thank you guys for all your work, tenacity, for your vigor, for your vision, in coming up with, I think, what is one of the best sound policies that really captures what we need to do as a city. Say thank you so much.
Mr. Bloomingfield.
Thank you. I too want to rise and thank our two chairs of the two committees. I serve on the Budget Committee with Mr. Kukorian, Mr. Buscaino, for spending the time to put together this series of instructions, these policy implications. What we're looking at here isn't the actual ordinance, but it's the critical steps that go before that ordinance. And what I like about it is that we're not just talking about sort of the policy in black and white. There is tremendous amount of detail in terms of what we're going to do and how we're going to be smarter about how we make sidewalks in the future, in terms of incentive programs, in terms of alternative materials, something I've been very keen on and have a few motions on, and I'm very grateful that that's been made part of this process, because it's not just a matter of putting concrete down the way we always have. We have to both have a financial commitment, a political commitment, and we have to realize the most up-to-date sidewalk technology that's out there and take, look at the big picture in terms of stormwater, in terms of the public-private partnership, in terms of our neighborhood councils. And all of these instructions here move us in that direction, to make us a smarter city in the way that we move forward with our sidewalks. So I'm grateful for all the time that you all have spent, that the committee has spent, that everyone in this council has spent, and, you know, I look forward to us moving forward with the process and seeing the ordinance and making headway on these sidewalks.
Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to rise and thank Council Chairman Buscaino and Chairman Kukorian for an outstanding experience, eight months in. This is great news that I could deliver it to my constituents. All the constituents are super excited, they're already going around inventoring their sidewalks that they want to start repairing. So this was welcome news, and I really appreciate your leadership on this matter that started well before I even got here. And of course, the departments, Gary Moore, Mr. Reamer, I mean, everybody working on this. This has been a long time coming, and thank you so much for all your efforts.
And I quickly, I'd like to join that chorus as well in thanking all of the city family for all of the hard work, all of the staff, you know, you're so important to us, and I want to thank you guys for doing a banner, banner job on this project. I do want to acknowledge Mr. Kukorian and Mr. Buscaino as well. And one of the things that I know Ms. Martinez, Mr. Price, and I were concerned about is we got a lot of calls from senior citizens and people from economically depressed areas afraid that in the event that their sidewalk was again damaged, that they would not have the money to pay for that. So we sent a letter to the committee asking for you guys to consider that, and that's where we came up with the guarantee, so that for 20 years, so in the event that something occurs, a senior citizen doesn't have to worry about that. And so I just think this was a, this is just a perfect example of the work that we can do, the big things that we've done on this council. So I'm excited about this and looking forward to voting I. Mr. Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Colleagues, I'm happy to support this measure, and I'm really, really happy to support this measure, because this council opposed Assembly Bill 2231 that I drafted in 2012, asking the legislature to prohibit cities like the city of Los Angeles from instituting the repeal of the sidewalk ordinance unless we ask the voters for their permission. Because at the time, four years ago, this commission, this Public Works Commission, this council was sending a signal, Mr. Englander, that we would be extending the liability of sidewalk repair to constituents. So I introduced a bill from the legislature, and thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield, for your vote, and then Senator Padilla for co-authoring the measure, saying that if you all are going to do that, we better ask permission from the voters. Now, Mr. Englander was quoted saying that we should not support anything that takes away our ability to figure out a solution to this problem. The solution at the time was extending the liability to Angelenos. I am so pleased that this commission, new commission, this new administration, this new council, although you all voted to oppose my measure, some of you, this new council has come up with solutions that actually make it so that I enthusiastically support this measure. We should not forget, though, that we are here because of a consent decree. We are here because we have settled a lawsuit so that we can make our sidewalks traversable by the community at large, every shape, size, and color of Angelino should and deserves passable sidewalks. So we're here, I think, in a very momentous situation, because above and beyond the commitment that we have to satisfy in this consent decree, we are going to make streets and sidewalks in particular smarter. We're going to make it so that they extend the canopy and cool communities, we're going to make it so that they catch and retain stormwater, we're going to make it so that Los Angeles is far smarter than it has been just four years ago. So, thank you, colleagues, for giving me the ability to support this proposal and not just extend the liability and cost to our Angelino, but do it in a way that they get their full investment, and we're going to get right back on track with state law. Urgent I vote.
Okay, there are no more speakers on the Q. Madam Clerk, I think it's time for us to vote on this item. Why don't you please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
14 ayes.
Okay, public comment has been satisfied on this item. They've had community hearings, I want to say five or six in the community and the various committees, so public comment has been satisfied. Congratulations, Mr. Buscaino, Mr. Kukorian, and congratulations, council, well done. So that brings us now to general public comment, correct? Mr. Walsh? Mr. Sedia?
Fourth with, please.
Item 39, forthwith at the request of Mr. Sedia. So if we could get Mr. Walsh, Ms. Pierman, Mr. Previn, and Ms. McAllister come forward. General public comment.
...org. I didn't hear you pass number two on the alcohol license. I want you to understand, now you bear no responsibility, everyone out there, for the sidewalks in front of your homes. No responsibility, no taxes. And if you're a renter, the landlord pays it. What they're putting in here, and I'm going to read right from page 13, repair cost sharing. That means you will pay for it from now on. Unanimous vote that you are going to pay for the damage on the sidewalk that was not done by you. Every single one of these people are, did not allow us to speak under public comment, they had phony meetings. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, you just got another billion-dollar tax bill from this city council, and if you want it up the ass, take it up the ass.
Ms. Pierman, Donna Pierman, followed by Mr. Previn.
Our number-one priority is safety. We need to disallow Obama's executive action on Agenda Number 18 against our Second Amendment rights, ability to defend ourselves, and deport all those Syrian refugees. Obama wants to bring in more refugees, deport them. Most are not Muslims, well, most are Muslims, excuse me, most are Muslims, not oppressed Christians and Jews. San Diego had a nuclear plant, it's closed now, but Syrians can gather materials and build a dirty bomb and destroy Los Angeles, killing, burning, maiming men, women, children, babies like Pakistan. Obama is radical Muslims advocate, Hillary wants to continue his legacy. Please don't vote for Hillary. Our only hope is Donald Trump. Ten Cruz, Bernie, and Bernie will do nothing. Radical Muslims will overtake us and get rid of democracy and bring in Sharia law. Our only hope is Donald Trump. That's not a racist, unreal feat, Hillary. Can't you hear? Al-Aqaba, death to America, death to Israel.
Thank you, Mr. Previn, Ms. McAllister.
Just a quick comment on the sidewalks for homeowners. If somebody trips on the sidewalk now, you'll probably get sued under this new ordinance. Now, I read that Congresswoman Maxine Waters visited Skid Row over the weekend, and she saw that 90% of the people on Skid Row are black children, men and women, and she had the nerve, that Negro had the nerve to say she want to help everybody in the United States. You can't get the words "black people" out of your mouth, Negroes. It's blacks that are suffering, 80% unemployed, 80% homeless, and you want to help everybody, which includes illegal aliens. Tell Maxine Waters that she needs to step down. We're tired of these old timers who've been in office 30, 40 years, we need a new generation in there. Black people are suffering. If it was not for black people, her black rear end would not be in Washington. people, her black rear end would not be in Washington, D.C.
Okay, do I have a Mr. Harvey, I think it's a Ms. Jones, and a Mr. Shin, please come forward.
All right, you ready? So this wireless weapons attack, everybody out here is under attack, whether you believe it or not. When your electronics go dead or something and you look at it, you just gave the software a reaction. You let it know that it was successful. When you get a pain in your arm or something, you've just been hit with radio weaponry. You go "ah", you go like that, you just told the software that it was successful. This thing is going on, a lot of people are being attacked. We trying to get a million people out here because this is priority number one. I don't understand why all you guys sitting there like you're special or you're wireless weapons-proof. But we have a serious situation, and we're just encouraging you to tell your people, tell your people, we need to get out there. I know you work for the government, you can't do certain things, but this is game time. We got to figure this out for the kids' sake. Everybody is a target to wireless frequency radio weapons, whether you believe it or not, it's all about reaction.
Thank you. So next speaker, please identify yourself.
Yes, my name's James Shin. I'm a targeted individual. I'm 52 years old. I've been moving from city to city to city, trying to figure out why people are following me, stalking me, poisoning my food and water, why they're hitting me with direct energy weapons, okay? For those of you who don't understand what this is, they've basically weaponized the microwave oven, okay? And they're shooting people with these weapons, okay? This is a horrific, horrific human rights violation, okay? I don't know if you guys are aware, but in the city of Richmond, okay, the Richmond Police Department, okay, they created a task force specifically to take complaints from targeted individuals, okay? What do you think happened when they, when they created this task force? They were overwhelmed with all the responses, okay? Thousands of calls from not only the city, this country, but all over the world. There are literally hundreds of thousands of victims like myself who are suffering, being tortured every...
Thank you. Thank you. So if I could have the next speaker, thank you, your time, your time is expired. Please come forward and identify yourself.
Crystal Jones, I have had numerous meetings with at least five of you city council members on wireless technology being weaponized. We keep coming back, we're going to the LAPD Commissioners Meeting, and right now, all we're asking for is for you guys to get one person within the Los Angeles Police Department to take, what is it called? To be able to take reports from people who are being attacked by wireless technology. Stop calling these poor victims crazy. Little kids are getting hit. You've got little kids out here who are being medicated, saying they're ADHD. They're coming up with all these little blood disorders, cancers, and you guys are putting in more and more Wi-Fi throughout our city, which is attacking the Los Angeles citizens. You people are sitting here saying that our safety is your number one priority, but you're not doing anything to keep us safe.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Spindler, no, you're disrupting. Okay, Mr. Spindler and Mr. Hunt.
Well, it's over. The sidewalk repair vote. Now we got them. Mitchell Englander voted yes for the sidewalk repair tax. Now his candidacy is over. Congratulations. No county board of supervisor for Mitchell Englander. Baba bitch, no more. You voted for it. Everybody in the Antelope Valley now going to know that you want to run for the board of supervisors just so you can make all the poor people pay for sidewalks that are defective. Thank you for that vote. At least we're going to keep you here on your leash. The rest of the people, the white hood tried, the white hood tried, the white hood must abide. My bill is $975,000. Pay me, bitches, pay me.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
It was 10 years ago last week I closed City Hall. Michael Hunt, KKK. If you go to the YouTube video, you will see it very well. Janice Hahn and Bill Rosenthal had really good sense. They knew what it was about my job. Now I'm being violated again, and doesn't really make any sense. My next, to all of you guys, DNA for LAPD. You just don't rape anybody and go away. If it would have been a black chief, he would have been fired. Had that shit, had it would have been Pay Singer or Bernard Parks, he would have been fired. Chief Beck is getting a free ride. But just like I said, I closed City Hall, I'm not leaving till I go back to work. So if you don't understand that, I will be here. I will be here. It's about work. I sell soap, not dope.
Thank you. Thank you. So do I have, is it pancake? Please come forward. Take your time. Yes, sir.
Good morning, city council, and good morning, President Weston. I worked with, when I was much younger, with former mayor Tom Bradley, went to Dorsey High School, so I'm local. I just want to make one quick comment in regard to address the citywide sidewalk repair. It's been a long time coming. I witnessed an accident once, not too long ago, one of our little toddlers kind of tripped, and she broke her leg, and that was very unfortunate. But to the public works, I would encourage you to hire, whether it's contract or already employed, to the unemployed, have young unemployed minority men and women participate in these repairs. Councilmen and councilwomen, please get them employed and have them to have a hand in these repairs. I'm done. Thank you.
Do we have a Roman mark? And please get your cards in early. Usually when I start, I don't take cards that come in once we do in public comment, but go ahead, sir.
I appreciate the exception this time. Thank you very much. I'll remember that, and I'll take the time off my time for thanking you. Just want to mention one quick thing, folks. The more time you spend in the sun, the longer you live without burning. It's very important. Don't burn. Sunscreen is toxic to almost everything, and the vitamin D pills have toxicity in them too. So we live in a great place to get the sunshine. Thank you for your time. Have a great day.
Thank you, sir. That concludes general public comment. Madam Clerk, that brings us where?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, motions are posted and referred. Announcements, members, announcements. I don't see any announcements. If I could ask all in the chambers to please rise for adjourning motions. If everyone could please rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Englander.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm saddened that today I'm asking that we adjourn in memory of a dear friend of mine. Mary Kaufman, who was a tree leader in Chatsworth, the equestrian community, for many, many years. She, she battled for a while, but she passed away unexpectedly on Thursday at the age of 68. It's the second anniversary, in fact, of her death of her favorite horse, Ace. She was a longtime president of ETI Corral 54, an equestrian organization devoted to trail rides, horsemanship, just living that quality of life. She also served on the board of the Chatsworth Neighborhood Council. She was the chair of the Equestrian Committee and the chief organizer in the council's annual Day of the Horse, which now has thousands of people attend to celebrate what the equestrian lifestyle is all about. In fact, she goes around to all the schools and has an art competition and gets all the kids involved, where they create these incredible paintings of what it means to not just live in an equestrian area, but about sharing the road with horses, and some of the artwork is displayed in my office. She was appointee, she was my appointee, in fact, to the city's Equestrian Advisory Committee and was active, the West Valley Volunteer Mounted Patrol. She hosted mayors Eric Garcetti and Tony Vierigosa. Numerous council members here were out there riding with us, and Mary, she led us through the beautiful trails of Chatsworth and throughout the community. She, she was one of a kind. I mean, she was always passionate about everything she did, but it was really, to her, all about the community, everything that she represented and stood for. She was very active with the Los Angeles Police Department. She volunteered as a mounted patrol officer, Chatsworth Community Coordinating Council. She worked at the Pierce College Equestrian Education Center from 2006 to 2008, and while there, she helped organizing special events for the facility and served as a member of the management team, and of course, equestrian boarding. Originally, Mary was a native of Oakland, but she fell in love with Chatsworth at first sight 20 years ago. She bought and remodeled a ranch on Chatsworth Street, where she kept her horse Oscar, Diosa, and Raven, all three horses, and her dogs. After all the remodeling was done on a ranch, she said she loved being able to just stand on the rear deck and look out on the backyard with her horses and dogs. This is all I need. It's all here in front of me. I never have to leave. Mary was a heart and soul of Chatsworth and the entire equestrian community. She was generous beyond words with her time and her heart. She will be missed by all of us. She is survived by her daughter, her granddaughter, her grandson, sister, and partner, Marcia. We're going to have a celebration of her life on Saturday, April 9, at 3 o'clock at the Homestead Acre. And I will tell you, it's been, when she passed away, it was, my phone was just blowing up. I think everybody was just in shock. And she left a hoof print on this community that will be there forever. To her, it wasn't just about enjoying the equestrian and the rural lifestyle, it was instilling that passion in so many. The fact that she got Nury Martinez for the first time out on a horse, saddle up, ride with us, and so many that came out so many times to ride. To her, she would stop in the middle of a ride up in the hills and say, "You see all these hills? Don't ever change them." Every time we went out, she'd give me a long laundry list of all the things that I needed to do, and trail maintenance, and making sure that that community was protected. She's one of the most passionate people that I've met, one of the most honest, friendly, sincere people. And I'm honored that she was part of my life. May she rest in peace.
I'm going to continue to look to my left side. Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Members, we are having a tough week in Council District 8. I have two adjourning motions today and probably a couple more during the week. The first one is for Concepcion Lopez Rendon. She was born in Jalisco, Mexico, moved to Los Angeles in 1973, was a longtime resident of the South Los Angeles area, worked in manufacturing, and eventually was very, very proud to become a member of the Teamsters Union. She raised four children here in Southern California, Yolanda, Irma, Carlos, and her son, Fernando Montez Rodriguez, who's my district director, is her son. We were very, very sad because many of us, for many years, have been working on getting a pardon for Fernando for some trouble that he got into very young. And Governor Brown literally issued the pardon the day after his mother passed. And so we're all very, very saddened, but we will celebrate her this week. The second one is for Thelma Ransom Finley. Born in Mississippi in 1926, she moved to Los Angeles as an adult, where she lived here in South Los Angeles, was a leader and a member at Mount Maria Baptist Church in the 9th Council District. She helped build that congregation under the leadership of Dr. Melvin Wade. She helped start their Vacation Bible School, their Sunday schools, their Wednesday prayer services. She passed away quietly at home on March 21, and Thelma is the grandmother of a dear friend to many of us and a person who's helped keep this city and this building going for many, many years, Monique Ford Earl, our deputy city controller. It's her grandmother.
Mr. Bloomingfield.
Thank you. I rise today to adjourn in memory of Enrique Duran, who had a long career as an educator in the San Fernando Valley. Enrique was born in El Paso, Texas in 1934, and he passed away last week. After his family moved to Los Angeles, he attended Canoga Park High School, where he was active in the drama department before graduating in 1953. He attended Pierce College and then UCLA, where he received his bachelor's degree, and USC, where he received his teaching credential. He was an Angeleno through and through. He began teaching at Francis Polytechnic High School in Sun Valley, where he was the drama teacher from 1963 to 1978, and then he returned to his alma mater, Canoga Park High School, where he took over the drama department and remained there until his retirement. During his teaching career, he directed more than 45 drama productions, eight musicals. He taught more than 4,500 students at Poly High School, Canoga Park High School, and San Fernando Adult School and El Camino Adult School. In the 80s, he was appointed by Mayor Tom Bradley to the Cultural Affairs Commission, where he served this city. In 2005, he was inducted into the Walk of Hearts in Canoga Park. You may not know what the Walk of Hearts is. It's like the Hollywood Walk of Fame, but it's done for teachers and educators, and it's something that happens in Canoga Park. It's a wonderful organization started by Joe Andrews to recognize people like Enrique and his fellow educators who have demonstrated excellence, commitment, innovation in teaching, and leadership in teaching, as well as commitment to assisting and supporting students. He was the poster child for the Walk of Hearts. He was devoted to his loving wife Anita, who predeceased him, to his children, Roberto and Ana, and to his grandchildren, Jared, Derek, Nico, Ben, and Kyla. Enrique's funeral mass will be celebrated on Wednesday, April 6, at 11:00 a.m. at our Lady of the Valley Catholic Church in Canoga Park. May he rest in peace.
Thank you. I'm going to, Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. Today I'd like to adjourn our meeting in the memory of Professor Don T. Nakaneishi, who passed away on March 21 in Los Angeles. Don was a director of the largest and most renowned research and teaching institute in Asian American Studies in the nation at UCLA. He was a legend, and personally, he was my, one of my advisors at UCLA. He was born and raised in a multi-ethnic, working-class community of East Los Angeles. Don attended Theodore Roosevelt High School, where he served as student body president. In his senior year of high school, he was selected as boy mayor of the city of Los Angeles. Don received his bachelor's in intensive political science from Yale in 1971, and his PhD, also in political science, from Harvard in 1978. Don is a pioneer of ethnic studies and is widely recognized for developing the fields of Asian American political and educational research. In 1971, he co-founded and served as the president of Amerasia Journal, the top academic journal in the field of Asian American Studies. Five years after that, Don compiled lists of Asian American elected officials across the country to launch the first National Asian Pacific American Political Almanac, which is now in its 15th edition, and has been touted as the which is now in its 15th edition, and has been touted as the indispensable guide to Asian American politics. Don received numerous awards for his scholarly achievements in public service, including the Lifetime Achievement Award from the American Political Science Association, Division of Race, Ethnicity, and Politics. He also received the Lifetime Achievement Award from the Los Angeles City Council, Los Angeles Board of Supervisors, and the California State Assembly. Don is survived by his wife Marcia and son Thomas, and may all our thoughts and prayers be with his family members and friends during this difficult time. May he rest in peace.
Okay, now I'm continuing to look to my right side. I don't see any more adjourning motions to my right. I'm going to check with the left. Members, this meeting is adjourned.